Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Education regular meeting. Are we in compliance with open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
All right. Please call the roll.
Carlin Herzog.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
Heschel.
Here.
Zalagi.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
We have a call.
All right. Thank you. I would like to invite Dr. Gunlock to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And before we get started into Board and administrative reports, I just want to acknowledge kind of a change that we haven't seen for something that's different in this room for a good part of a year is that many of us are unmasked and we are perceived that we are in compliance with the new masking rule that the school district announced late last week. And so, and for anyone that were to come in and to want to speak or interact, they should know that everyone, anyone who is vaccinated, all adults that are vaccinated can wear, can be maskless unless there is a young child, a child in the room. And then everyone is intended to mask up at that point. So, but at this point, it's kind of an honor system. So if you're, if you have a vac, if you're vaccinated, you're welcome to not wear a mask. And if you are not vaccinated, we please hope that you comply with that. So that is something that we would call a milestone. And it's been a year in progress of making that. And so let's hope that as we move forward, that our community will continue to, continue to get vaccinated so that as we begin to look to build plans to open up schools more freely without masks in the fall, that it keeps us on that path. So, so thank you. Let's, let's get started. I don't, first up is the Board President's report. I don't have much to report because I've been in a transition myself in my, in my personal and professional life. And so, but I do know that hundreds of students, seniors graduated in the last week, and that is a wonderful act. We televised and had students, seniors getting their diplomas in person at the Menominee Nation Arena last week. And so that is again another change from, from last year in regards to that. So that's a positive. And in addition to that, we got to see what we call the, you know, the promotion ceremonies of fifth graders and, and eighth graders moving on to middle school and high school as well. And we also got to have those ceremonies take place at, at the schools as well, getting their awards and being recognized, students being recognized for their accomplishments for, for the last year, for the last challenging year. So, so those are, those are always great things to celebrate. And that's why we're here is to celebrate students. So, so with that said, I haven't had much time other than to have that time to celebrate what was going on. So with that, I'd like to move on to the Superintendent's report. Dr. Gunlock, if you could lead the way.
I can do that. Seven students in the Oshkosh West Global Academy program received over 20,000 in scholarships for their study abroad programs this summer. Students will be participating in a variety of programs, including activism, world government, and climate change. Congratulations to Oshkosh West swimmers Addie and Lily, who were recently nominated for the High School Sports Awards for Northeast Wisconsin. We want to take a moment to recognize all those who helped us feed those in need during the school year. Between November and May, the district partnered with Feeding America Eastern Wisconsin to distribute farm-to-family food boxes for community members, along with free school meals for children. Thousands of food boxes, along with nearly 150,000 school meals, were distributed. From our incredible food service staff to local clubs and organizations, we could not have done it without you. Thank you very much. Washington Elementary declared the month of May Curious Questioning Month. The month-long theme focused on student engagement and promoted, promoting learning through natural curiosity. Students asked a lot of great questions, including how long is the blue whale? Who can hula hoop longer, Mrs. Levy or a fourth grader? Not sure what the answer to that was, but she's in the room. Well, she's saying she won. So, why do people get sick? Why do some lizards change colors? And so many more. Congratulations to the five recent graduates of our School to Work Program through Oshkosh Corporation. A graduation reception for this year's graduates was held at Oshkosh Corporation's global headquarters. All of the graduates were offered full-time competitive positions with Oshkosh Corporation, and one has chosen to continue their education at Fox Valley Technical College. Our Special Olympics athletes recently enjoyed an end-of-the-year banquet to celebrate their accomplishments in various sports. Congratulations and great work, everyone. Two OASD pupil services staff members were recently recognized by the Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services for their exceptional support of our students. Katie Schmitz, school psychologist, and Jody Gunkel, school social worker, received the Making a Difference Award. Congratulations to our very own Oshkosh West Activities Director Brad Jedarski, who has named District Four A.D. of the Year by the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association. Very well deserved. The district recently honored the class of 2021 during in-person graduation ceremonies at the Menominee Nation Arena. Both ceremonies were professionally livestreamed and are available for viewing until Sunday, June 20. Visit the district's homepage for links to watch each ceremony. One additional walk-in item that, just for folks, is that we had a breakfast on Mon, or Friday, with Webster and Merrill Middle School staff. It was the first time we brought these two staffs together. And it was a great event. The architectural firm got, came in and shared with them all the latest and greatest drawings. And they got a chance to give us some feedback and generate some more questions. So it was just one of many events to come where we're going to be bringing those two staffs together because they are no longer two staffs. They're actually one staff. We just have a couple of years to get there. So we're excited to continue to do that. And that's all we have from the Superintendent's Good News Report.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock. All right. Next up, we have District Administrator supplemental reports. And first, I would like to have a COVID-19 update from Mr. Kemer? Kemer? No, not here today? Okay. So, all right.
Out of state.
What's that?
Out of state.
He's out of state at the moment, yes.
Okay. All right. So then we'll move on to B, and that's Marketing Report by Katie Neiman, and I think supported by Dr. Gunlock as well.
Yes.
So, thank you, Katie.
Absolutely. Katie Neiman, Communications Director for the school district. The purpose of this written report is to provide an overview of the district's communication and marketing efforts, specifically focusing on our current efforts, and then also looking ahead and exploring some opportunities. So within this report, obviously, I tried to provide as much background information as I could. Certainly, if you have questions or want to delve into something that I don't address, I'm happy to do that. The first thing to note, I think it's important, all of you around the table obviously understand that education has become a matter of choice. And because of that, there's competitors and the need for communications and marketing to set yourself up. With that, it's important to understand that districts have chosen to invest in communication. Luckily, Oshkosh made that commitment a few years ago by instituting communication in its strategic plan in 2016, bringing on this position as a brand-new position a year later, and then continuing to prioritize communication efforts within the strategic planning efforts. So that's just a little bit of background. And then focusing on where we have been spending our time, want to briefly state, just obviously this year has been very unique in what our communication has looked like. So without going into the details there, it's obviously a significant amount of time, if not the majority of my time, has been spent on COVID response. But in addition to that, we've been able to make significant progress that I think as a district aligns with our strategic planning efforts and certainly the overall communication efforts. So some of those highlights include bringing in more communication channels, such as a monthly e-newsletter and in-home mailer that will start to become more regular with a quarterly drop in mailboxes throughout, households throughout the district, whether you have a student in, in school or not, as well as continuing a variety of different projects, ranging from referendum outreach and communication, to crisis response, to just project support within the different initiatives that our schools and buildings are going through. So in addition to all of that, response has also been related to, going back to, with this being a unique year, the impacts of COVID being felt, we've also focused our efforts on things that were somewhat out of our control with response to COVID. And that centers around our students and our student enrollment and programming. So some of the things that we focused on first was to do outreach regarding our e-academy programming. So we were able to do a direct marketing campaign to make sure that those that left our, either our schools or our virtual programming, for a virtual program in a different city or state, knew that they had a great option and could come back to the Oshkosh Area School District through our e-academy. So our direct mailing effort there resulted in bringing 32 e-academy students back to us. Similarly, work is ongoing with the same approach regarding families and students that have chosen to open enroll out. So making sure that they know Oshkosh wants them, and we want to make sure that they understand the opportunities that are available to them. And that includes keeping them abreast to our planning for 21, '22. So knowing while we don't have all the plans locked in, keeping them abreast to what we are committed to, so that they understand what the next school year will provide for them. That's an in-progress process that we will be continuing through the summer, especially as families start to make and lock in those decisions as to what they're doing for the next school year. In addition to that, communication efforts related to overall enrollment strategies, we will be executing an exit survey to families. The goal of that being to understand, you know, if they've chosen to leave the district, help us understand why, so that we can then use that information to target our marketing and communication outreach strategies. Also continuing to update our district communication plan, a two-year cycle. Again, obviously, this past year kind of took us away from some of those priorities in there, but we've still been able to make progress by reevaluating that on a regular basis so that, again, we're continuing to make those advances as a district. And then just one thing to also note, I mean, there's a lot of different projects going on, but there is significant focus on how do we capitalize on our social media platforms? It's something that as a district, we've started, you know, doing better over the last couple of years. Our schools are certainly active. But now it's taking it to the next level and making that a more coordinated effort. So those are the ongoing, or the current and ongoing things. And then I think it's helpful, I think many of you have raised the question of what's next or what further brainstorming can be done. So in the final section, I detailed some long-term marketing efforts. And that's with the goal of sort of how do you focus on doing more than either being proactive or just doing the same thing every year? So with that, again, prioritizing the social media strategy because when it comes to school district marketing, having a consistent storytelling hand is critical. And then using the channels that are out there to capture audiences in a variety of different formats is key. I would also suggest conducting a brand audit to determine sort of what do our target audiences think about us or know about us, and using that information to guide a strategic marketing effort. Identifying annual marketing campaigns. So as I stated before, as a district, we've invested in communications, which is obviously the starting point of a strategic communication initiative. But the next phase of that is how do we then market ourselves? So to do that, first, understanding where we're starting from and where those key goals would be. And then similarly to what we've talked about, we know that open enrollment will continue to, need to be a focus, especially with the competitive nature that now is education. So starting to prioritize an annual enrollment campaign that keeps that at the forefront. So obviously, those are some high-level things. Happy to delve into anything further. But I think bottom line is there's a lot of opportunity and work to be done. And it's a matter of, again, putting strategy behind that so we can do so in a coordinated fashion.
Any questions from Board members?
I have one. I'm just curious if an exit survey has ever been done in the past, or is this going to be?
Yep.
It has been.
Yeah, we did. We worked with UW-Oshkosh some years ago when we started looking at the open enrollment problem. And we started look, asking them, you know, why did they leave and why did they come? Because we were really interested in both things. And the funny thing was, to boil a very intensive report down to a couple of things, they left and came for exactly the same things. They, they either felt the service, they felt the services were going to be more in line with what their students needed wherever they went. And that was the same for students who were open enrolling in and those who were open enrolling out. There's always with open enrollment, there's, there's situations where transportation just makes it more convenient to go to school in a different district, or you've left that district and you want to, you want to stay there and finish out. I mean, those are very common things, but that usually is a relatively small number. Our issues really began to relate to an increasing number going out for e-academy-like functions. And if you look at the report, it says here that we captured 32 students back. If my math's correct, that's about a quarter million dollars, right there in one shot, recapturing 32 of those kids. And special thanks to Julie Conrad and Katie and all the others who worked on that. I mean, it's not easy to go from seven students in an e-academy to over 1,000. And, and that took, that took a Herculean effort to stand that up and make it a success. So I think we have, we've identified the, the situation early, and we've started seeing inroads in marketing to those individuals to let them know you can come back home. And not only do you get an e-academy experience, you get all the other things you'd get if you were in person every day.
Yeah.
And, and we see that as a real, a real win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm very happy to hear that we're going to have this strategy as far as getting kids back into our district. If COVID's taught us one thing as, as a parent, is that you have many educational opportunities. You can go 10 miles in any direction, basically, and enroll your kid into a different school district. To piggyback off of that, have we looked at what other successful districts are doing as far as marketing their school districts? Because I remember Winnicott County, they've done this for like five, four or five years ago. You'd go down Highway 41 and they'd have, they'd have a bulletin board up. And they'd be actively and aggressively pursuing students on a regular basis. So I, I think there's probably some really good ideas from some other districts out there that have been successful at recruiting school, or recruiting students to their school district.
Absolutely. I think using, you know, luckily, districts have started, like I said, to focus on communication. So there are a lot of national and local resources. And I'll certainly be relying on those to guide our decisions and our activities. I think the important thing to realize is before going down one path, that we, we own our story and we know it well and can say it consistently. Because starting to piecemeal marketing pushes can confuse, you know, what those efforts could be. So that's why I go back to, I think it's, it's important to focus on what is our overall goal? What is our overall messaging? How can we distribute that? And what channels are the best way to do so?
In a district this size, we have a marketing and communication department of one person. Comparable districts like Sun Prairie, for example, has more than that. And Sun Prairie is actually smaller than we are by maybe 4,000 students, I believe. I think they're around 6,000. So it's important to get the story out. And Katie, I think, has done, Mrs. Neiman has done a great job of getting the story out. But she's just one person. And there's a big communication piece, there's big on marketing, and it all takes time. So I think down the line, this board may need to think about expanding the role, especially once, as the plan is fleshed out in terms of what we're looking for and how we're going to get there. But I want to thank you for the yeoman's job you've done as a department of one.
Thank you.
Especially over this last year.
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
We have a very difficult time figuring out what we did before she was here. All we know is we didn't communicate very well and we didn't communicate very much. So it's been really good to have her.
Anyone other comments? All right. Then I have something to say. First, I want to thank you that, I want to acknowledge that from when I came on to the school board in April of 2017, I feel that there's been vast amounts of improvement in regards to communication. And it took two years of me being on the school board to get you to be where you are today. And so to me, that's progress. You know, it just shows progress that we are looking in that direction of, of creating a more sustainable line of communication to our community. So, so I think that's important to acknowledge that is that, and also acknowledge that that was actually a goal of several strategic plans as well down the line. So, so we are following that path and making that happen. So what I think Dr. Herzog brought up in regards to, you know, the question about that Mrs. Neiman is a staff of one trying to execute a communication plan and finding ways to support further execution of our communications plan. And everything is, it really is at the forefront of some of the things that we do as, as a board, and finding ways to support that, that adventure of communicating our story, our message out in the community. And so I just put that back to us because essentially what Mrs. Neiman put in her report was that, one, she needs more money, two, she needs more staff. So, and that, that comes, that comes back to us. And so when, when that updated communications plan comes back to us, we have to be prepared to provide the resources for that department to succeed. So, and, and right now, it's, you know, what we've done is great. What you've done is great. It's gotten us where we are. You've had to do what you've had to do because of the circumstances and with the resources that you've had. But what, what we're hearing from members around the board and, you know, hearing from staff and hearing from the community is that we want our story to be heard a lot more than what, than what you're able and capable to do right now. And, and so I'm personally looking forward to having that conversation of, you know, working on updating that communications plan, setting in those goals and working towards those goals within all that. And so I actually have a question in my statement of, is when do you foresee coming back with us in regards to like an update to that communications plan?
Sure. I think realistically, it's a matter of obviously managing my time while I will be out of the office. So I would expect being able to return and provide that information in November or December
Okay.
of the upcoming year. And again, with that, the goal would be to, I already have done some of the strategic research related to both, what is what best practice and what are we hearing, or what is our community and stakeholders telling about what they, they want this next phase to look like? So that will allow us time to get that information and put some initial planning thoughts together.
Okay. So, so with that in mind, we're really thinking, we're really thinking of, you know, expanding our communications plan further in '22, '23, '24 type of school years at that point. And, and I guess the only, the only question or critique that I might have here is, is that, you know, in my mind, I'd, I personally would support, you know, an increase of dollars right away that can be used, you know, to be able to help these marketing activities, whether it be, you know, the summer or whether it be, you know, for the next school year, you know, coming up. I just, I don't want to be, I don't, I want to give you the time to do what you need to do because that's really important. And knowing that you're going to be on maternity leave, that definitely has some importance. And I want to respect that. But I also want to find a common ground so that we can find a way to be able to move forward quicker and find some acquiescence in our community to see that we've acknowledged some of the long, short term, it's not long term, it's actually short-term needs of, of our district a little bit. And so I'm not expecting you to answer that question. I just, I'm just voicing that as, as a way that, that if we could find a way to do maybe a short-term update to the communications plan, that we can, as a board, can move and support some of the ideas of providing more budget and providing potential, you know, an additional, even additional staff, you know, to be able to be supportive of, of you when you're not here, but also be able, for you to be able to move forward when you get back as well.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only thing I would, I would say is, is we want to make sure we do this right. And it's part of the overall communication plan. And as people have heard me say before, sometimes they get sick of me saying these things. Sometimes you got to go slow to go fast.
Sure.
You know, you got to set the things up right, and then you can really take off in the right direction. And, and that's good news, what, what we're hearing and the fact that, that the board members seem to be very supportive of this. But we want to make sure we do it right, too. Because we don't want to swing and miss it this one.
Sure. So just to maybe put that in a, in a different way, is when we are preparing our budget for the next year, let's think in advance of this instead of waiting. Because, you know, around the time Mrs. Neiman comes back, is going to be this time that she'll be talking to Mr. Neons over there.
He's already nodding.
So, is that?
We're getting it as we speak.
All right. So, because that's, I, I want, I want your department to be supported, to be able to move forward with the resources that you need to be able to kick out any, any plan that's, that we update. And I don't want to be in March saying, well, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't allocate enough money for you to do that next year. So, so let's just think in advance that we're going to create a plan and that it's going to be updated and it's going to be a vibrant plan that's going to increase our communication across the board. And, and we're going to, we're going to support that as a board. So, does anyone, not really taking votes at this point, but does anyone have any concerns with that type of direction?
I just have a comment, if I can. I mean, we have 10 weeks until kids are back in school again. And if all those kids we lost go back to the same school they went to the year before, then they're ingrained in that school for two years now. I understand wanting to get it right. But I also understand that this is a critical time.
And just to clarify, that is built into the ongoing efforts of working with our Student Information System Manager to develop those enrollment pushes based off of the data that she's able to pull in the households we can target. And it is giving exactly the messaging of, this is what our school year will look like, giving them those updates, just like we're giving our families that are, are with us. And then always asking that, presenting that ask to, you know, join us back.
I guess, I guess my question then is, do you feel like you have what you need to make a valiant push at getting those students back into our district?
I think so. I mean, again, it's, it's looking at doing things that we have never done before. And that starts with a simple email or a simple postcard campaign. That's definitely doable. Again, it's just doing it so in a window that makes sense for when they're making that decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Katie, you know that I like your work and your enthusiasm and your professionalism and your creativity. So when you put this plan together, go big. Let us take it back down. Don't leave us with something that says, oh, wish she would have gone a little bit bigger. Go big. This is vital to the success of this district.
Appreciate that.
Yep. And we're going to make sure, show that you have money for it. Right, Drew?
He's writing furiously over there.
All right. Is there any other comments for Mrs. Neiman? Thank you for your report this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
All right. Next, we are on other reports. If there are any board-related committee reports or board involved, board member-involved reports at this time. Go ahead.
So just a brief rundown, we had the Education Committee meeting Thursday, June 3. And And topic that we talked about a couple of times was achievement levels for our, you know, children. So, one of the items that we see has been consistent is that children continue to come to the district less prepared or ready to learn each year. So, they're starting off a little bit lower down than where they have in the past. So, it has shown up as they progress on. But the messaging that we, we have been getting, given is, you know, the teachers are doing an outstanding job of catching those children up as they go. So, it's just a matter of, you know, keeping an eye on those, on those numbers and make, and, and, you know, being aware of that. But, you know, ultimately, the goal is obviously to, we can catch all those kids up to get them where they need to be. And that is currently being done or being worked on to be even better, because there's always room for improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other reports, comments? Alright, seeing none. Next up is non-agenda-related public forum. I do not see, I haven't received anything, nor do I see anyone from the public that would be here. So, so with that, we're going to move on to agenda-related public forum. And again, we have no one signed up for that, nor is there anyone here to provide any public comments. So, next agenda item is our, is our workshops. We have three scheduled workshops tonight. Our first one is, we are here with via Zoom with Mr. Ted Nitski from CISA 6. He's going to give us a breakdown on the Gallup Engagement Survey that we engaged in, I believe it was early this year or maybe late.
January.
So, yeah, early this year. And so, this is the, the, this would be considered the, the public release of those, of those numbers and that information. So, Ted, are you, are you able to hear us and connect with us? Yeah, okay. We're just making sure that we can hear you. Alright, can you?
Trying to figure out which way to look on the screen to look at everybody. So, Chris, how you doing? And then I think down here is Beth.
Oh, nice. Good job.
He's been in this room a lot.
Thanks, Ted.
Skills on the Zoom here, apparently.
Alright, so Ted, so go ahead and lead us away with, with the results, please.
Excellent. So, I'm waiting for the ability to share so I can project my, your findings here. While I'm waiting for that, I just would say that a huge thank you to the staff and the site leaders and divisional leaders and department leaders and district leaders for helping us push out the Gallup survey to staff. One of the things that you want is you want heavy participation in the process. And the Oshkosh area school district enjoyed that. So, the results I'm going to share with you tonight are a true reflection of the deep engagement levels, disengagement levels of the full staff. The presentation tonight will have three kind of core areas here that we'll talk about. And we will be able to get to those three things in a second. So, my goal tonight is to share with you the current state of the Oshkosh School District, steps moving forward, and then recommendations. We will, after tonight, I will give this presentation to you publicly to share. Now, again, my name is Ted Nitski and I'm the Executive Director, CEO at CISA 6. We worked in partnership with Gallup on the Q12 Engagement Survey. This is a survey used by millions of people around the world globally, from companies like Microsoft to Verizon. Verve in town, Verve Bank in town uses it. As a matter of fact, Verve Bank and CISA 6 are two of the 39 employers globally who are recognized today by Gallup for having highly engaged workforces. So, what I'm looking forward to supporting the Oshkosh area school district moving forward is CISA 6, Verve, and another Wisconsin company, Quartz, are going to be getting together to share our strategy so that we can learn and grow to support the school districts. I've been working with the Q12 tool now for 15 years and we were very excited at CISA 6 and other school districts we've worked with to transform culture and engagement. So, with that, one of the things that I want to make sure that everybody recognizes when we get data like this is that it does not have, it does not have a heartbeat, so it does not deserve an emotional response. This is the best and worst engagement has ever been as measured by the Q12 because it's the first time we've ever used this instrument. As you'll hear from me tonight, one of the things that is an expectation or a support piece moving forward, and Dr. Davis knows this, moving forward upon the hiring of new superintendent, one of the key pieces was to put in place a regular analytic that the board could use to measure the engagement of its staff. The research is clear and I'm going to share that with you, but a highly engaged staff leads to highly engaged kids, which leads to a very engaged community and very successful children and staff. Low turnover rates of staff, high retention rates of staff. So, again, where we are at tonight, it's the best and worst it's ever been. And like I said, when we look at this issue, we're trying to fix the problem, not blame. We could look back and say, this is this person's fault or this is that person's fault or this is this person's success. But when we get data like this from Gallup, all we do is move forward and try to create the conditions for high levels of engagement. So, with that, a culture is defined by the conversations that are had while people are walking out the door, not what, how they act in the room together. And when you have a large school system like the Oshkosh area school district with thousand-plus employees, what we want to do is we want to get that indicator of the true culture. And using a third party is an extremely wise decision on your part as a board to do that because then there's high trust levels for the information. So, I just wanted to share with you the difference between engagement and satisfaction. We are not chasing high levels of staff satisfaction. Instead, we are chasing high levels of engagement. Both times, the employee owns their engagement, the system owns the satisfaction. And in the case of the engagement, what it is, is it's, do the staff have meaning? Can they demonstrate growth? Do they have the ability to grow? Do they have autonomy to make decisions? Do their decisions have impact on their work and are they connected while they are working in school? Satisfaction is, I like it. So, I always use the example of, in, in the world of pens, right? So, the school district has pens in all the schools, but some teachers don't like those pens. If asked the question, do you have the resources, do you need to be successful? The answer is yes, I have a pen. Do you like that pen? The answer may be no, and we can work to change that condition. But again, trying to satisfy every single person on all fronts is a difficult task. High engagement, that's good work. So, one of the things that is important for boards to know before we look at the information of the community know is that in the United States, 51% of the workforce is not engaged at work. That leads to $450 to $550 billion annually lost in the United States economy because teachers, staff, employees, and companies all over the United States are disengaged. Disengaged employees, in addition, create another $500 billion in productivity loss. Disengaged employees use all of their sick time. Disengaged employees use all of their PTO time. Disengaged employees come to work and they do not follow up processes, standard operating procedures, and they will actually work against expectations. Now, 70% of the United States workforce is actually disengaged. So, 50% is not engaged, but 70% come to work not engaged. The good news for the Oshkosh area school district is, you're above the national average in engagement. You're, you're above this, the national average for, or you're below the national average for disengagement, as you'll see in a minute, but not by a huge margin. And that's where we have the opportunity for improvement. In the United States, 30% of the teachers, as you can see there, are actively or are disengaged. And actively disengaged teachers represent 13, I'm sorry, 30% are engaged and actively disengaged teachers amount for 13% of the workforce. An actively disengaged employee is a dangerous employee to have because they actually come to work, working against any expectation. They will work against rules, expectations for everything from safety to learning and everything in between. Now, these are the behaviors of an engaged employee. They feel they can fix what's bothering them. They take risks. They understand that they can make decisions that impact their work. They're surrounded by people who are invested in their success and they are willing to collaborate with other people. They are solution-oriented. They trust the people they work with and they know that their opinion is matter, that their opinion matters. So, this summer, with the, with the administration and the new superintendent coming in, one of the key expectations should be that they develop a plan to start to address these pieces. And engagement starts at the building level. The superintendent of schools is only personally responsible for the engagement of the people that he or she evaluates. And it trickles down throughout the organization. So, your principals are in charge of the engagement of their staff. The teachers who work with PAs and aides and assistants, they're in charge of the engagement of those people. Because in an engaged organization, everyone recognizes that they are a leader. And a leader is anyone who has influence over another person. And engagement can be measured by their influence and ability to support other people with their work. So, that's engaged behavior. This is just a simple little diagram we put together to show you the difference between an engaged employee and a disengaged employee. And you can see they're proactive versus reactive. They motivate others. Some complain about work, others avoid, others communicate. Now, one of the things we see in highly engaged school districts is a true sense of hope and happiness. And that is where the board can come into play by supporting the strategies and the economic needs to create those conditions. There are so many things that showed up in the feedback from staff that are beyond engagement that it creates another opportunity for the system to improve. So, before I move forward, does anyone have any clarifiers about what the difference is between engaged or disengaged or the statistics on the American workforce?
No.
Okay, here are the key findings. Now, again, I want you to remember one thing. This was in January. This was before any change in administration. But it was also, it is also, the first time we took this, we took this tool and teachers had high levels of engagement. So, there are three areas that are core issues for the Oshkosh area school district leadership team and board to get strategic about this summer. Number one is communication. Staff feels, and I will show you some of their own comments. Staff feels that there are decisions made that are poorly communicated. There is a blame-up mentality in the district. It's either the board's fault or the superintendent's fault or their principal's fault or the district office's fault. And that just shows the opportunity to close the gap in communication. How are decisions made? Who made the decision? Why is the decision made? Why is this important? Why does this even matter? Those are the gaps in communication where I think there's some really nice opportunities for improvement to get very, very specific about those pieces. One of the things that I would suggest that we'll talk about here at the end, but I'm going to kind of bump to it, is there is a lot of communication that comes from a group, right? That comes from district leadership or whatever the term is. It needs to come from a person and that person needs to be accountable for those communication pieces. The other piece is shared decision-making. The buildings, and regardless of, regardless of what the employee position is, because this was not just the teachers. This was all support staff, contractual, non-contractual, and limited term, or part-time FTEs as well. And there is a real feeling that like we have no input into the decisions that are impacting our work. And the last area is trust. And I have suggestions for all of these. So, this is the data directly from Gallup. Now, green is good, okay? Yellow is meh and red is bad. We're going to see a complete heat zone graph of the entire system and all of the employee groups in a moment. But what I want to bring your attention to is some of the key celebrations. First is that 1,106 employees participated in this survey. That is significant because that is a big chunk of your staff. It is the overwhelming majority of your staff, open to the 80%. 28 percentile is your national ranking. And we want to target being in the 66th to 70th percentile overall in the nation. Now, to get like where Verve Bank or CISA 6 perform, you have to be in the 90th to 95th or 96th percentile nationally. And that's a journey and we will show you how to do that. The one area of concern here is the 13% actively disengaged, which is on the right-hand side of the diagram there. You see there's 32% engaged, 55% not engaged, and 13% actively disengaged. That's in direct alignment with the national average for educators, but we need to close that gap in a hurry. And that is where all energy and effort should be on the strategies. Actively disengaged employees are employees that do harm to the workforce. They waste money. They, they don't follow rules. There are safety issues and concerns. They do not use the curriculum and they are proud of it. They have no place in a school district because they hurt kids at an active disengagement level. Disengaged or not-engaged staff, there's great hope there at 55%. And then 32% engaged puts you above the national average. So, there are 12 questions. We're going to go through those here in a minute. But the lowest areas of performance were in Q4, Q7, and Q11. And those are areas that you're, that we just spoke to, that we need to start to work on. So, when we look at the heat map of the entire district and all 12 or 13 total questions, on the left-hand side of the column, it shows every single employee group that was surveyed. Now, as you can see that chart, you can see it's overwhelmingly two colors, red and yellow. There is a little bit of green and there's a little bit of dark green. Like, I don't know who your deans of students are, but you're, they are your most highly engaged group. So, that teacher, dean of student grouping, they should be the first group brought in to ask, why are you engaged? What conditions make it so that you like the, that you have what you need at work, that you are satisfied, that you have the materials, that you have the recognition that you need, et cetera? Now, at the same time, the general exempt employees, the maintenance employees, the clerical 52-week employees and the teachers and pupil services, as well as some of the staff at program coordinator level, et cetera, they should also be brought in. They are your highest disengaged groups. Anywhere where you see red in there that runs across the line from the left side to the right side, if the entire column is red and yellow, those are groups of people where small groups should be brought in immediately for mini-focus groups and then be put on a task teams to actually tell us what needs to happen in order for them to be more engaged. Engagement gets put back on the employees. It gets put back on the disengaged because we want to create the culture where people solve their own problems. And if they can't do that, then they usually either move to actively disengaged or they leave the organization. We want everyone engaged. In five years, I believe this entire graph can be light green and green if the district puts a tremendous amount of emphasis on the fact that we want our staff engaged. So, moving on to the next one, I just wanted to show you your certified staff drawn out of that. Now, these are your principals all the way through your teachers and all of your licensed staff at the building levels. At the building levels, there's a really neat theme that emerges. They're engaged in their building. They're disengaged when it become, when they have to work as a district. So, there are some hints here to the old days of the Oshkosh area school district being site-based managed. And you have a cultural renaissance taking place that you should be taking advantage of. And what I mean by that is, you've got two groups of staff. Staff who used to have the ability to make decisions at a site-based manner and then other staff who've never done that. And obviously, the district is moving towards a much more highly collaborative, system-centered organization so that kids all have the same opportunities. And where we want to be here, again, is we want to be in a district in alignment where strategy and tactics cascade down through the organization. So, the real opportunity here is to bring in the principals and the site teams and have a conversation about what needs to be done and what processes need to be followed in order for the district to have high levels of engagement. So, as I move on, I'm going to go to your highest area here of scoring. You're in the 52nd international percentile on one area, which is question number nine. And that is, are you committed to quality? 1,097 response on this, 4.23 average mean on a five-point scale, which puts you in the overall mean category in the 52nd percentile ranking. Your staff is committed to doing a good job. That is what they are saying on this one. Every other condition around them, however, is anchoring and pulling this down. The three areas where the staff is saying they are the lowest performing or the lowest areas of engagement are first in recognition. They are indicating that people do not recognize my effort. People do not recognize my work. I do not get feedback. And, and I am not getting enough information to guide my work and risk as I move forward. Now, this is a really good problem because this is an area where it can be shifted very quickly. When we looked at the root cause in the When we looked at the root cause in the analysis, a lot of this may have come from evaluations changing or being waived through COVID. Teachers not getting the normal recognition that they would get during a regular school year and cycle. So this could move very quickly. I believe this is low-hanging fruit. The second one is that their opinions count. Now, this is where you're in the 23rd international percentile. And what opinion counts means is that when they share their opinion, it is heard, listened to, valued, and then the key word here is weighed. Weighed, not used, but weighed. So if I come in and I say, you know, I don't think we should use navy blue for our background, the person in front of them says, go away, that's disengagement. Engagement would be, we'll consider that, that's not a bad idea. And then if we don't use the blue, we communicate back with them why we did not use their input or their feedback. Closing the loop of engagement. So engagement, you know, if we have people taking risks to share their opinion, but we don't go in their direction, but we do not, and, and then we fail to go back and share with them, hey, this is why we didn't do it the way you suggested? However, this, these are some of the nuances we did? That's where we get these really low levels of engagement on opinion counts. I'm not inferring, and opinion count doesn't mean a democracy approach, like let's vote on this and we'll do the majority rules. That has nothing to do with opinions. This is staff feeling valued when they share their information, that someone closes the loop back with them and says, here's what we did, why we did it, and these were other options that we considered. That way, anyone who shares their opinion can say, well, I shared my idea, and they looked at it, but they didn't do it, so I'm gonna try again in the future. And then the last one, Q11, the 13th percentile internationally. And this is a flag, obviously, because it's red, but people not knowing their progress. Am I doing a good job? Am I closing the loop? How do I know that I'm successful? This is a category, again, over 1,061 people indicated this is their lowest level of engagement. And again, this is a progress piece. This, all we need to do is put in place processes, allow the buildings, the autonomy, to follow the process for their own culture, and then re-engage and reignite staff on the journey. So a couple of pieces here about the written feedback, and then I'm almost finished here for questions with you. Again, remember, data does not have a heartbeat, so we're gonna move forward. 877 people responded on what was going well. 65% were positive, 6% were neutral, 20, or 6% were negative, 24% were neutral, and then the, the last category of respondents. This is what they said. Staff and buildings feel connected to each other and are committed to each other. In other words, they will run up a hill to fight and die on the hill together in their building. But they will not carry the district flag at this point. And that's not a bad thing, that's pretty normal. Making staff feel connected back to the district, seeing the journey from 4K or early childhood to 12th grade, that is, that's where we close this gap. Staff does not know what's going on all around the district, and there's some really cool strategies that can be employed in the short term to really create that connectedness back to the system. The staff do care about kids, that is evidence. Lots of pride in there. They feel valued at their sites by their leaders. The principals are appreciated in their buildings to a T, and they believe there's great staff collaboration at the sites. So what you see here is a disconnect from the district. So when they took this overall satisfaction of the entire district, the disengagement was with the whole system. But at their building, those who responded say that's what's going well. Now, what needs to be changed and what are our opportunities for improvement? Here, we had quite a few more people comment, 941 people comment. 7% were, were positive, 53% negative, 26% neutral, and 14% mixed. So what did they say? Communication. We do not know what's going on, and what we are communicating with, it's usually through the rumor mill of the building, texting between classrooms and teachers and administrators and staff, or finding out too late, or being embarrassed in the public that they're learning at the same time that the community or public is. Now, I have to tell you, in working with your communications department, I think they are fantastic. I just think that one of the things the staff needs to see and hear is how do they get looped in initially instead of an email a half hour before the community when the majority of the staff is working and they cannot see emails? They believe shared decision making is lacking. There is a rift, believe, between the buildings and senior leaders that was articulated. District-level leadership is disconnected to the buildings, they're saying. High school facilities came up over and over again. Now, again, this is a really good example, that has nothing to do with the Q12 questions. But when staff articulate that, it goes back to their opinions don't matter, people are not taking, giving me what needs, I need in order to be successful. So the high school facility piece, as you're addressing here moving forward, will be something to, to create plans around. Gratitude lacking, trust for process and people in decision making. Staff is disconnected from decision makers, and non-certified staff feels disrespected. And that's an interesting one, because that happens in a lot of educational organizations where some staff will walk past non-certified staff and not acknowledge them, not see them, not recognize their contributions. So these are the core areas that need to be changed, the key, the key opportunities for improvement that the new superintendent would be charged with taking and developing strategies at the building level around as we're moving forward. So I'm gonna get to questions here with you in a second, I wanted to get through my recommendations. So these are my recommendations or our recommendations moving forward. Number one is engage the staff in the strategic plan and train the entire administrative team on engagement. So what does engagement mean, and how do you actually deploy strategies? Now, that's something that's part of the contract that I would do in a four or five-hour session with the administrative team to talk about how to create task teams and goal teams, collect information, use tools, and move them forward. The other piece is to train all new hired employees on what it means to be an engaged employee. So what is the Oshkosh way? The Oshkosh way is that your opinion matters, that we need you to solve your own problems. We need you to step forward and be solution-oriented instead of problem-oriented. You go through and you train and onboard your new staff to ensure they recognize what those conditions are so that when they see the disengaged employee or the actively disengaged employee, they can recognize that that is a breach in values of the organization. I also believe in the simple mantra to bring the problem to the problem. This all needs to go back to the buildings, this all needs to go back to the district administrative team to work collaboratively with the buildings, and to make sure that all departments are also engaged. Remember, about 50% of your workforce supports the classroom, they're not in classrooms. And their engagement is almost more important than the classroom engagement because they're the ones who make all the conditions for engagement in the classrooms. So little things, like when the maintenance team might cut the grass, you know, in the middle of ACT testing and they're buzzing past classroom windows, and then the staff's mad at them, but there's no communication piece. That's just an example of my personal experience from when I was superintendent, but those would be examples. District communication through innovation, innovative formats, videos, interactive opportunities, you know, quick polls, short feedback loops, frequent feedback loops. If you were to have a niece or nephew move to the Oshkosh area school district, would you recommend them go to the school in which you teach? And if people say no, we gotta find out why. Create change management training. That came up, that was pretty evident as change goes through the organization. Change by the boards tend to changes by every leader at the board meeting, which is 10 more changes by everybody else. What is the change management process? What's the change management philosophy? And what are the steps and operational expectations for that? So identifying those pieces through strategy is what needs to happen. District-wide reports, reports on results. One of the things that could be easily done is to create a district-wide scorecard that is quarterly published that shows, here are attendance rates, here are engagement rates, here is where our students are performing, here is where our, you know, attendance are for athletic events, here's our student engagement numbers. Make sure that every teacher, every support staff member, every administrator can tell the narrative of the district. In that absence, you have 1,200 employees who should be out there telling great stories about the district who for the last year, a year and a half, may not have been doing that. And then internal communication processes for celebrating, communicating, and seeking input. One of the key areas that you can immediately shift the culture is celebration, focusing on the positive. And I'm not saying that that is not happening, it is happening. But it can become district-wide, it can become more genuine, and it can become driven from the staff themselves. And then finally, that the board themselves, that you as a board say that high engagement is an expectation, period. It is a core principle of our organization, in a kids-first organization, and in a rapid failure mindset, that we are gonna do everything we can to make sure we have highly engaged staff members. That signals to everyone that this is very, very important. You have signaled to the entire community that equity is critical. And I think if you, you engage staff in the engagement process, not only will equity move, but student scores will move, the Oshkosh area school district being a destination employer will be buffed up and polished again, and a lot of neat opportunities will come your way. I'm really optimistic that this can be done, because when I met with the principals and the district administrative team and went through the data, they asked some hard questions, but they were incredibly reflective. You've got a really strong team in place there, and I believe that, you know, taking these recommendations, doing the training in July or August before the school year starts, and sitting down and have actionable plans through a PDSA process or a short-cycle improvement process will lead to immediate results. So the root causes of the three areas are this: communication, shared decision making, and trust. And if we can emphasize that, we'll be in really, really good shape. Next steps, like I said, are gonna be the training, the data involvement at the building to make sure the building sees their engagement numbers against the systems. And then, I don't know why I keep going too far, but my strategic piece that I called the leadership team about is that we need a sunrise. We are moving to a sunrise day, we have a new school year starting, the entire system resets on July 1st, and I think we need a strategic do-over. And we need to tell the staff and ask the staff for this fresh start and start the school year, asking staff, what will they do different in order to be personally engaged in the success of the organization? With that, I'm through my presentation. Any questions or clarifications for me?
I have one question. Ted, how often would you redo this Gallup survey to see if we are making progress? Or is this done now and we go into another wave evaluating our successes?
So, am I looking the right way now? So what we would do is, you, you are under contract to take this twice a year. So one time in a formative format, so just to see where everybody is at in the day, to see where everybody is at, and then a second time in a summative manner to get reported to the board. Now, if we do this right, in the future, you would, you would actually do the summative evaluation of the staff. The first week of October is when we recommend to take the first one, and then we take it a second time in March to see if we had any growth or gain over the course of the year. And then the board gets the report at both times to see where staff engagement is, and then to hear from the leadership team what strategies were employed to get that movement.
Ted, this is Barb. I like to look at things in a context. And I'm not one that makes excuses, but I try to look for explanations. So that's where I'm coming from in my remarks. This survey was done in January, basically, January into February of this year. At that point, we were 10 months into the COVID pandemic. We had some staff in the buildings, we had more staff at home working extraordinary hours, very hard, going back and forth between five-day-a-week virtual, and then with the prospect of coming back to school five days a week. That was the conversation at the board level in January. My belief is that moving forward with the support of the central office and the principals with the strategies you've outlined, we will move the needle on these things. That was, that was a challenging time for the board, it was an extraordinarily challenging time for our staff to do this survey at that time. It was basically halfway between, halfway into the pandemic. And I'm not trying to make excuses, but I think the, the results moving forward will be different. When we've got staff in school five days a week, we've got students in school five days a week in person, and, and people can see one another, they can work together. Principals and other administrators will be walking through buildings and classrooms and, and providing some of the recognition and the positive feedback to people that perhaps wasn't as readily available in the fall. So again, I'm trying, I'm not looking at that as, as excuses, I'm looking at that as the context, the bigger context during which this survey was, was utilized or implemented.
Oh, thank you, Ted. Thanks for the advice. So one thing that I wanna hone in on, I guess, is and engagement is really important, and a good quality workforce that's engaged is important to me. But there's been, you've seen correlations between student scores and districts turning into destination-type districts based on how these survey results pan out?
Yeah, so what'll happen is, when, when the engagement levels start to increase, the staff themselves become promoters of the organization. This is a good place to work, it's a good place to learn, it's a safe place to work, it's a safe place to learn. It's where you are valued, your opinions matter. When staff gets educated and taught about the engagement components, and then they, they, they share in that engagement data, they will start to recognize that their conditions are good. They will, especially if we bring it to them. A teacher who loves what they do, and then loves what they do where they do it, is amazing. So you have a lot of teachers who love what they do and are conflicted about where they're doing it. And if we can bridge those two things, put any kid in one of those classrooms, and if we could differ, and we don't have the ability to do it, but if we could draw down to the specific teachers who are highly engaged, disengaged, or actively disengaged, you will see a correlation between results.
And the one, the one other piece, and I really liked your ideas on how to bridge this. But the largest, one of the larger pieces of the puzzle that was conveyed to me through these results was the disconnect between, it, it seems like every single teacher, et cetera, greatly cares about the site they're at. But connecting the whole district as a whole seems to be the biggest, one of the biggest cogs, or one of the biggest things that we need to work on fixing, it would appear, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I can, I, when we go through the training this summer, one of the things that's gonna be suggested is system tours with the staff. So, you know, if you teach, I, I taught high school, middle school. I didn't know what was going on in the elementary school, ever. If I taught, if I, I could teach 25 years in one of the elementary schools in Oshkosh and never be in a building at another level, and walk around it and see all of the different ways in which students have opportunities to learn. And that's where disconnect happens, right? So right now in Oshkosh, you guys are doing the right work around equity. But there are staff in the upper levels who don't see the diversity that the middle schools and the elementary schools see. So they go through trainings and they're like, I, we look the same we've always looked. But if they were to go down to the elementary school, and then go through different elementary schools and see the diversity in, in the classrooms, they would then be able to understand, oh, that's why this is so important, because it's coming up through the pipeline in the organization. Same thing with curricular changes and challenges. We need to create the opportunity in the Oshkosh area school district so that staff can see all of the different ways in which kids can pathway through the organization. And then they, they become engaged, because now they get it. You know, when you, when you launch a behavioral program, if you work in a nice school in a nice neighborhood with nice kids, you don't understand why you have to use a behavioral management program. But if you get to the opportunity to go to a school where it might not be so nice, and there might, there might be behavioral challenges, suddenly you're like, oh, yeah, now I get it. So those are the types of strategies that we'll work around this summer to design and develop, and they don't cost a lot of money. It's just time.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. One, one greatly positive thing, though, is that there's lots of good things going on. It's just bringing all the pieces of the puzzle together, from, from what I gathered from the survey, so, thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my final thought here would be for you, unless there's more questions, is where we want to move to is right now, we're a school district. Okay, and what I mean by that is, you are operating as a district of schools. What we want to do is, we want to operate as a school district. One district with One district with schools in alignment to those ultimate objectives and goals as laid out in policy and by the state and federal government. And when you are a district of schools, everyone thinks they're fine. And we want to get everybody to stay out of the same huddle. And that's where we see the power of this across the state and the country in the school districts who get there. Some school districts engage in this process and go backwards. That will not happen in Oshkosh. You have good leadership. Any other questions for Ted?
I'm just very excited about this. We have a baseline now and we have a baseline to build on. And many years ago, I had applied for a teaching job in the Oshkosh district. And I asked the interview team, what's the strength of the district? And it only took a nanosecond for a response, and it was the staff. I still think that's the same answer we would get today. We have an extraordinary staff. And I believe they will commit to this because it's all about kids and what's best for kids. So, I'm excited about this and the progress that I believe we're going to make over the next few years. So, thank you.
You're welcome. The key celebration coming out of tonight is that you had a huge amount of staff participate in this. That puts you on the radar. That means your staff still cares, and that's excellent. Anything else for me?
One, go ahead.
No.
Oh, you're waving.
All right, because otherwise I was going to end with, you know, your theme song for my presentation then. We got good problems, you guys.
Thanks, Ted.
Good night.
You're welcome.
We appreciate, oh, he's gone. All right, so thanks for all of you and your engagement in that. So, that's wonderful. So, next up, we have strategic plan, goal, and priority. Goal number four, priority number three will be led by Ms. Perron, Ms. Brown, Miss Conrad, Ms. Manneke. Did I get that right?
Manneke.
Manneke, all right, sorry. And Ms. Tennyson. So, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having us.
And so, if we could quickly do introductions so you know who's here. So, we have Jean Manneke, who is our SCL coordinator, PBIS, SCL coordinator. Julie Conrad, Director of Curriculum Assessment.
Lynda Perron, Director of Special Education.
Katie Tennyson, PBIS, SCL, System Support Facilitator.
And so, today, we are going to be focusing on goal four, Safe Learning and Working Environment of our strategic plan. As a reminder, we look at metrics within the plan duration and design that look at completion of tasks, but also at metrics, how are we doing towards outcomes on our strategic plan? The other piece with this is a reminder that when we are looking at metrics and we're looking at data, we are looking at levels of observable impact. We'll be focusing on the green levels, levels one, two, and three, where we're really looking at district measured results in our strategic plan. But please do keep in mind that with the data that we do talk about today, we do keep track of school-wide data, classroom, grade level, course data, individual student data. And yes, we do look at subgroups disaggregated. We look at data in many different ways. And so, when we are looking at a strategic plan and the impact, once again, we're going to be sticking with the green areas in today's presentation. But please know that we absolutely, and if you do have questions about it, delve down into levels four, five, and six as we look for root causes. So, inside of goal four for Safe Learning and Working Environment, we are currently at a 56% completion rate when you look at all the tasks and subtasks that are underneath each of the priority areas. We have four priority areas under goal four. Enhanced student and school safety processes, supporting enhanced student mental health and physical health. Today, we are going to be concentrating on priority three, providing training and resources to support student behavior. We're currently at a 63%. We're going to offer that as highlights today. And then cultivate a culture of positive supports, relationships, and acceptance of all students. So, I'm going to turn this over to Linda.
Yeah, so we're really proud of where we're at with this. Our major accomplishments so far are establishing a framework that really integrates all of our initiatives as really led by Dr. Brown. We have created a social-emotional behavior continuum, which I shared with all of you yesterday because it's very comprehensive. And we don't have time in 20 minutes to delve through that one-stop behavior shop. We have aligned that continuum with our literacy and mathematics continuum, all within the same multi-level system of support. And we're really excited to have set up more training opportunities in the area of conscious discipline, collaborative and proactive solutions. Harmony SCL, which was known formerly as Sanford Harmony, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, using our EduClimber and updating our School Counseling Association standards. This is just a little demonstration or to show you that SCL or PBIS is really just a framework. But conscious discipline really gives adults and students the mindset that's an evidence-based, trauma-informed care method, which you'll see we will be going through extensive training, all of our elementary staff. Harmony is the curriculum or the tools to teach certain skills. And then collaborative and proactive solutions are really looking at how to solve problems and addressing students' lagging skills. So, the Behavior Continuum of Support, which I shared with you, and this team up here had a really nice multidisciplinary team that worked on this and then kind of edited with our administrators. It's really laying out all of those universal classroom expectations when students are back five days, providing educator with the resources and strategies within a multi-level system of support. It's aligning those continuums again to look similar at the district levels. It's very structured and identifies not only the expectations, but reinforces expectations and then also uses data monitoring. In addition to that, it lists steps and tools that educators can use to address behaviors and when and where to seek additional support. So, staff training, present, past, future, or past, present, and future. All elementary staff will be trained this August. And online training occurred during COVID shutdown. In addition, you'll see a little bit later that there's a group of administrators and staff going in June and July for extensive training. Some are train, you know, getting trainer of the, training of the trainer. Train the trainer, yeah. That's what I'm looking for. CPS or Collaborative and Proactive Solutions. We started that back in 2019 with Multidisciplinary People Services and Behavior Intervention Team. We did do a full training with special ed staff in April of this year. And then five of our schools have applied for a scholarship through Dr. Green's Collaborative and Proactive Solutions to hopefully implement in 2122. We have up to 11 schools now interested in implementing that Harmony SCL curriculum this fall. So, just an update, our school counseling model needs to be updated and will be updated to align with the latest and greatest standards. Julie could talk more about this, but a significant amount of work has been done by our counselors for that ACP, the Academic and Career Planning, to ensure that our students are college, career, community-ready. And then the elementary school counseling curriculum was updated in 2015, and that does remain current. So, when we talk about the observable impact or what we're going to use, we need to see a decrease in office discipline referrals. And really, these are major behaviors, those that involve the office. Minors are sometimes tracked, but really, universal best practice is to intervene early, teach, and reteach. It's not about collecting minors and catching kids. It's about reteaching expected behaviors. We want to see improved scores in our savers. And then we want to reduce the number of seclusion and restraints. And really here, we're just looking to establish baseline and targets so that we have, we can map that observable impact. So, each school does track their majors. Some are tracking their minors. But really, it's all the setting, the detail, the outcome. Those, I just said already that the majors really sometimes request assistance or those are office-managed. Most minors are less severe and managed within our classrooms. When you look at our Trends and Behavior data, as you can look, the highest major behaviors that were recorded was in the 1819 school year. In 1920, keep in mind that we had that shutdown right around St. Patrick's Day. And then this 3150 was in 2021. That was after we restarted. We would like a major reduction in 15% or less every year to downtrend. If we were looking at sheer numbers, if it were a full year, we would definitely want that 6,000 or less if we were looking at a full year. But really, we want a 15% reduction in majors each school year going forward.
Excuse me, if we could just go back to that bar graph. So, knowing that as of mid-March of 2020, we went to virtual learning because everything shut down statewide. You could probably extrapolate then from the 1920 year. It would have probably been comparable or fairly close to the 1819 because it's about a three-month period. Similarly, for 2021, if I'm reading that correctly, we've been, we were in school five days a week about three months. So, multiply that number times three, and it brings you up closer to the 1516 or 1617. Is that correct, if I'm reading that right?
You are absolutely correct. Yes, thank you. So, the savers, when we refer to savers, it's a social, academic, and emotional behavior risk screener. So, really, it's looking at a student's risk level for social, emotional, or behavior problems. It's part of our Fastbridge Assessment System that the district uses. It also assesses the effectiveness of the Harmony SCL curriculum for that pilot in those schools. It was supposed to be conducted three times a year for benchmark data, fall, spring, and winter. Also includes a teacher rating scale of 19 questions. It's an online administration tool that does not take very long. As you can see, one to three minutes per student. It was used by some classrooms, and it's also a self-assessment tool. It's available in grades two through 12. So, the pilot information, we used savers data in five. The Harmony pilot was in five Oshkosh area school, elementary schools. We were only allowed to complete the fall and winter benchmarks. Some schools did not begin implementation until mid-fall. You're going to see in the next slide, three schools showed growth while two other maintained their levels. 66 classrooms participated. But really, we will get our full data profile with those 11 schools in the 2122 school year. So, this is just a glimpse of the schools that took it that are there. And as you look at that data, the benchmarks, some of the risk reduced and most maintained.
Could you explain that chart? I wasn't sure I was reading that correctly.
So, there's a cut point on each of, there is a total score. Then there's a social score, an academic score, or emotional score, and a behavioral score. And you want to, the higher the score, the lower the risk of the student for internal or external behaviors. And when we then are below that cut point, then we're noticing students that have some risk. That's where we would want to step in to then provide some intervention, some mentoring, some check-in and checkout to really make sure that they're connected to somebody in the school. And so, what we wanted to see was that our low-no-risk numbers increased when we went from the fall to the winter. And then we were hoping to see another increase again when we got to the spring. So, we'll have to wait.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Our seclusion and restraint data, which is presented to you fall of every year, or usually I do that end of August, early September. Three of our elementary schools were recently identified by DPI to reduce or eliminate seclusion and restraints. Two of those three identified will be engaging in Dr. Ross Green's Collaborative and Proactive Solutions training. And by the end of the 22, 2022 school year, we will reduce episodes of seclusion and restraint by 75% district-wide as evidenced by DPI data collection. A little side note on this, today, we were awarded an SCL grant specifically to the Special Education Department to specifically look at CPS and reduce seclusion and restraints. So, we got a $50,000 grant today. Our district was just notified to help us in the area of SCL with special education. Thank you, Kelly Skiffstead, Julie Ruck, and our PBIS leaders for that. Our next steps, all of our elementary schools and early learning staff will be completing training the week of August 16 through the 20th. I mentioned before, some elementary and early learning building leaders are participating in CD1 training in June and July. There's going to be additional and ongoing training in the area of conscious discipline throughout the school year and through the summer of 2022. We are going to reestablish that SCL pilot using that Harmony SCL curriculum. We're going to ensure, our goal is to get that whole years of data using savers, those three checks. Also plan to integrate all of it with conscious discipline and our work with CPS. And then our goal is to establish a more defined approach for addressing LEL, SCL at the secondary level. Oh, I was supposed to let Julie talk about that one?
That's okay. No problem. You are on a roll.
Forty minutes.
Also, before we go into that third bullet point, also know that our Lighted Schoolhouse and Melt Programs, our CLCs, also use Harmony SCL curriculum. And so, when we start saying that we extend the school day, we truly do that through all of our SCL and our multi-level systems of support carry on into our after-school or extended school day. So, we really, our CLC director and staff and coordinators work with Jean and Katie to really continue those strategies going on through there. So, one thing, we actually talked about this in a previous strategic plan report, but there is linkage between all of these priorities, right? And the strategies that we're using. You probably also see linkage to what Ted Nitsky talked to us about, the Gallup survey and the strategies that we would be using with staff. I see a lot of those strategies stacked right in here when we, as leaders in the classroom, work with our children, right? And so, tying those together, there's really some similarities there. So, speaking of similarities and crossovers, we know that at the secondary level, we absolutely have to address chronic absenteeism because there is a connection between engagement in the classroom, being present for teaching and learning and doing well when it comes to earning credits, you know, being successful and being college, career, and community-ready. So, that's going to be our next thing is we're way down the road with elementary, secondary, and working through SCL would be a next action step that is, has to be addressed with chronic absenteeism.
So, everything sounds great. It sounds, you know, trying to get ahead of that and being aware of people. And I think that's important. What kind of buy-in are we getting from the teachers and the staff when the training is happening to kind of maybe change the way, you know, people have done things for maybe 20 years?
They're excited. They are very, very excited. When we asked our five pilot schools if they wanted to continue with the Harmony, inevitably, it was yes. When we went around and then asked our other schools if they were interested then in taking this on to implement that explicit social-emotional learning and opportunities, they all said yes, hands down. Conscious discipline, we all know, really is addressing adult mindset and having that understanding. And in order to change student behavior and cultures, we have to have an adult mind shift. And that's where our conscious discipline is going to come in. And we have people begging to go to the training. We just don't have enough funds to be able to send them all. They're just like, please, please, can I be next on the list? Where's the waiting list? So, there is high enthusiasm, engagement, participation.
That's great.
How many of our teachers have been trained in this so far? And what would be the ideal goal?
So, there's, Kim can answer that one.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I only ask because if it helps and if it reduces behaviors, and we know that increased behaviors reduce learning time for all children, which is proven, then what can we do to make that happen more frequently?
So, we'll share the different phases that we have for conscious discipline training. And so, what we're doing is, everybody had this year, virtual. We all had a virtual training with conscious discipline. This year, we're getting a two-day in-person for all elementary staff. This year, we're getting a two-day in-person for all elementary staff. So paraprofessionals, clericals, secretary who want to come, and of course, all of our teachers. So that's taking place. As far as our schools going to the seven-day training in Florida for conscious discipline, we've had pockets of people going. Our first piece of this is really making sure that all of our behavior interventionists, our social worker, counselor, and our principals are going to the training. And then we have principals who are using their set-aside funds in order to send a group of teachers. So some schools have done this very systematically where they've started with kindergarten, then they go to first grade, and they're sending their teams that way. Others are waiting for the leadership team to get trained, and then they will start taking a look at teachers attending. But it shouldn't be that they have to attend the seven-day training. I just think it's, of course, it's helpful. The more training you get, the more buy-in you get, the more excitement and enthusiasm. But we really are trying to bring it here. And so there is the actual training with Kim Hughes this summer, and then we're also having Kim Hughes come in to do some coaching. We're also super fortunate, Beth Shendel and Susan Martin have attended the conscious discipline training. They are helpers at the Florida Conference because of their background. And so they, we are very fortunate to have their expertise in the district in order to help all of our principals and school leadership teams to move forward. So we have a lot of things in place. We're also working on, because Susan and Beth have that experience, we're working together right now about, well, what does that look like for the principal team? What have we learned about able to bringing this forward? What does it mean for the school leadership team? What does it mean for all teachers? And so we're putting all of those places, all of those pieces in place too right now. Super pumped about it all. Yes, Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. Back when Jacob Shapiro was in the phase of charter school, they were an early adopter of conscious discipline, and I was on the board of that for a short time. Anyway, what very much impressed me was being able to see the implementation of conscious discipline with children. And just as Ms. Conrad pointed out, that engagement was a highlight of what Mr. Nitske was talking about tonight. It's also struck me that it was a piece of conscious discipline because the child was involved in the decision-making. He talked about bringing the problem to the problem. It wasn't a matter of quote-unquote yelling at the student or taking a punitive approach. It was often asking the child, what could you have done differently? What could you have done better? How will you avoid this in the future? And I just thought that had great promise. If you could do that with six and seven-year-olds, it seemed to me you could do that at any age. I know at that time, we were also, or Shapiro used some of their charter funds to invest in staff, not only in the training, but to get at least two of their staff members trained as trainer of trainers. I know at least one of those individuals retired, and one took a job in another district. Is there, is there any possibility for hiring trainers of trainers, the trainers who live in the state of Wisconsin and having them come here and train large numbers of people rather than sending a few at a time to Florida?
That's what we're doing with Kim Hughes as she's coming here. It's just that we're doing a two-day training because really it's about funding. So we have the fourteen hours that we can say, this is the training that we, this is our amount that we have teachers for. If we did a seven-day training, absolutely we can do that, but we would need to probably pay our teachers then to attend those other days. And so just sharing, you know, we're also very cognizant of what resources we have and how do we move this forward? And so, yeah, so there's Becky Bailey. I feel like we have the right-hand person of Becky Bailey, which is Kim Hughes, and that's who's coming to train us this summer in person.
That's great. And I see great value in having multiple people from a staff being trained, just as there's great value in having people go to a conference with people from around the country. But when you have your staff, a core group of your staff who are trained together and then can make plans for your site and your students, your demographics, that also I believe has great value.
Yeah, I completely agree with you. And so you had mentioned, we started out talking about Shapiro STEM Academy and how they started this, and I think it just shows when you look at what is really best practice at one of the charter schools and how can we make that universal for all. And so did start there, and we're grateful for you being present on the board in order to get that moving, so, yeah. Thank you.
I'm good, my question got answered, thanks.
Any other questions?
I'll just make one more comment to that. I'm a big fan of breaking the cycle, and you do the same thing over and over and expect different results, it doesn't happen. And this is one of those things that it kind of reminds me of like the excitement of being a parent, that I can do things different and you can help in different ways and think about it in a different way. And it's very refreshing, and so hearing all this, it's very exciting for me to see what happens, so, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
All right. Our next third workshop for the evening is the Achievement Gap Reduction, AGR, and that'll be led by Dr. Kim Brown.
All right, and with us tonight, I think most of you know, but we've got Kristi Levy with us from Washington Elementary School and Amanda Patsa from Jefferson Elementary School, and just so you know, Beth Galiazi and Kristen Berger were also wanting to be here, but there are, you know, it is the beginning of summer, and sometimes our families have very important things that also need to be attended to. And so, you know, we talk about students first, and when it gets to be summer, it's got to really be about family first for some of our administrators because they work all year and it's a big deal. So, anyway, tonight we're going to be talking about the Achievement Gap Reduction. And as you know, we have Jefferson, Roosevelt, Washington, and Webster Stanley Elementary, which ours are AGR schools, and we utilize the strategies of class size reduction, eighteen to one or thirty to two, as in taking place at Jefferson, instructional coaching, tutoring. Our literacy goals and math goals are up front here. The developmental reading assessment is what we utilize, and so when you see kindergarten equals four, we're really saying at the end of kindergarten, we want the students to be reading at a level four. And then you can see where we want our students at each of the grade levels. In math, we are using the Advantage Math Recovery Benchmarks. And so we, in kindergarten, we use forward number word sequence because that would be, that's counting forward. And then in first grade, there's addition and subtraction strategies that we want kids to be able to do. A level three is when they are able to count on. So if it's three plus two, the kids know we start at three and think four or five. Okay? Second grade, we use structuring. Structuring numbers is when kids are able to see, like, they can stupidize. So they might see three in two dots and like see that and know that's five. So it's kind of looking at dice and how that looks. And then third grade, we're really looking at place value. So that's where we are, and we are going to go through the different strategies, and Kristi's going to lead us off on this one.
So you obviously saw the core strategies of AGR, which talk about class reduction size, and they talk about academic and instructional coaching for staff. However, having said that, simply reducing class size does not improve instructional outcomes. We know that to be true. And so this really talks about what are the building level strategies that are happening so that when we reduce the class size, we're also coming at it from the other side, which is improving what instruction looks like at the classroom level. So we have some consistent practices that we use across the district in terms of math and literacy team meetings, weekly leadership team meetings, and all of our professional collaboration. We also have elements of that support that we have for teachers in place that look different at each building level, and that's by design because we know that, not just like all of our children don't have the same learning needs and the same need for support and growth, neither do our teachers. And so in our building, that really looked like, kind of getting back to some of that staff engagement piece, it really looked like, you know, giving teachers more autonomy in terms of what do I know my students need? We taught them some data literacy skills in terms of looking into student data and digging deeply into, you know, if we have students that are not quite where we would like them to be right now, what specific skills are they lacking? And how do we really guide our instruction to meet those needs? And so that then led to some really authentic coaching opportunities where our teachers were seeking out instructional coaching versus our instructional coaches knocking on teachers' doors and begging them to work with them and move student learning forward. But every building looks different, and every building has different needs. And so we start with the practitioner support and those strategies that really meet our teachers' needs. And then in the next slide, and I think it was supposed to be Kristen's, or yours actually, then we talk about, once we've addressed those practitioner needs and we've built up those teacher strategies, how does that then translate into student strategies? And what are our students doing in the classroom once they have teachers that feel more confident?
And I was just going to share, so Beth Galiazi was sharing just at her school this year, what a great opportunity, even though we were virtual, she talked about that virtual experience that they were able to have a common planning time for all teachers to come together and collaborate, and how that time allowed the coaches to be a part of all of those. And because of that, they were able to focus even deeper at the guided reading and strategy group level to really have the coaches be able to work with the teachers more and to help support the students more. So just having that common time and to be able to use that flow. So I think a lot of things that happened this year as a result of COVID are things that we're keeping in mind as we move forward. What are some of the good things that came out of that and how can we utilize that? And we'll hear a little bit about that too as we talk about Roosevelt. And again, all of our schools are using family nights, social media, and parent-teacher conferences, but we're just highlighting a little bit from each school. So at Roosevelt School, they used virtual family nights, and they had virtual parent-teacher conferences. So first of all, virtual parent-teacher conferences, not just here, across the district, we have heard were absolutely fabulous, more parents engaged than we've ever had at in-person conferences. So that has been really great, a lot of positive feedback, and so we'll look at that option for the future. As far as virtual family nights, Roosevelt had in the fall, something just all around campus, and so that parents could learn, they could go to different rooms and learn about, well, how does this look? How do I find my student assignments? And really just supporting them with what their kids needed at that moment. In the spring, they had a virtual STEM night, and this was really cool because they made deliveries, so everybody had all the materials for STEM night, and then they could just join the Google meets that night and participate. And they did have fifty percent of the families that were attending, but the very cool thing is, is sometimes if the families couldn't attend, the kids were coming in virtually alone, but going through, and so they were able to attend as well. And so that was heartening to hear that we have so many students able to participate as well as families within that. And so just really great attendance with that.
So in terms of extended school day and looking at Lighted Schoolhouse, typically during the school year in that non-traditional time of that after-school hours, that they're looking for enrichment opportunities to help support our students. And this year, due to the challenges posed by COVID, they really had to get creative. When we think about that switch between offering in-person and virtual programming, that happened twice throughout the year for Lighted Schoolhouse. And with that, their program really responded well. They implemented several strategies in order to reach our learners, including one-on-one tutoring sessions that were occurring while we were learning virtually and while we were learning in-person, along with various virtual activities, including trivia nights, counseling sessions to help address those social and emotional needs of our students. So they really have done a lot to effectively adapt to the challenges that were faced through COVID, and kind of similar to what Ms. Brown was talking about as well, in some, taking some of those aspects, and how can they infuse those into the future with the successes that they saw through those COVID, through that COVID pandemic.
So we're each going to go through our updated results from this year. There's a few things that I think we need to point out, just so that we are all looking at the data and seeing it in the same way. So we've always tracked our cohorts for you by showing you that, you know, last year's kindergartners are naturally the following year's first graders. This year looks a little bit different because we didn't have the opportunity to collect data in the spring of last year because we were virtual. And truly virtual, we weren't bringing kids in at all at that time. And so we're now tracking from kindergarten to second grade, which there's a much bigger space of time between data collection points. And so you'll notice that. The other thing that I wanted to point out to you, and this will be true of all of our schools, this isn't just a Washington thing, in grades four and five, we changed the assessment. So we were using DRA in grades four and five in the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year, and in this school year, we use iReady. So when you're looking at our scores comparatively, you just need to be mindful of the fact that we're kind of looking at apples and oranges, and that's okay. Moving forward, if we continue to use iReady, you'll see comparative data. This just isn't that. So that's something to just take note of, because you'll see some dips in those grade levels that look like anomalies. So our Washington literacy progress, this again is something that's true of all of our schools, but that we want to be mindful of. We didn't have beginning-of-the-year data that we would normally have. So typically what you would see for our percentage growth scores would be reflective of the change over time between fall and spring. And what you're going to be looking at instead is mid-year to end of the year. And so again, recognizing that we had long spells of interrupted in-person learning, you might not see that we have the same scores at the end of the year that we typically would, but I really like to focus on those growth scores because those growth scores are reflecting what has happened with our students and our classrooms between January and June, and really the scores are from May. And so rather than focusing on where we got at the end, I really think focusing on these growth scores shows how much our teachers were able to accomplish with our students during that time that they had with them face-to-face. I know that our teachers worked incredibly hard during a virtual learning, and for some of our families, that was very, very difficult. And so the other thing that you won't see reflected in our data is that our staff made incredible strides in terms of building relationships with our families during that time. And I know that seems counterintuitive because our kids were home and our families were home, but the amount of connections that were made because families reached out to our staff because they didn't know who else to call, and they trusted school. And so they were calling us, and we were working really closely with them. And so when you see them then come back to school and those relationships are strong and we need to move kids forward, we hit the ground running. And so I like to focus on that because I think everyone's just feeling a little bit nervous about what school will look like in the fall and how do we catch kids up? And I think there's a lot of silver linings if you're looking at the data from the right perspective. So those are our literacy growth scores. Our math growth scores are similar, if not a little bit higher. But again, just a reminder that that's really a half a year's face-to-face schooling, and especially when we're talking about K-one and our youngest learners, that's actually really something to be proud of.
Excuse me, would you mind sharing with the group what you shared with me Friday afternoon when I encountered you at the grocery store in terms of what Washington school? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. And we would love to come back and do a full report on it at some point, but Washington, so Washington Elementary actually was able to work with United Way to secure funding to do what we're calling SummerCLIME. And so SummerCLIME is bringing all of our K-one students back to school for seven weeks of additional programming throughout the summer. So they'll essentially be with us all summer long. And so one of the things that we think is really powerful about that is that it emphasizes that early intervention and catching kids when we know we can most effectively change their trajectory. But the other thing that's really powerful about what we're able to do is that they're going to be with their same kindergarten teachers, their same first-grade teachers, their same math interventionist and literacy interventionist, and especially their same math interventionist and literacy interventionist and a special ed teacher. And so, those teachers already know their students as readers and writers and mathematicians. They know them socially, emotionally. And so, it's, they've been off for this week and they'll be back with us Monday and for the duration of the summer. And our families and our students are incredibly excited. We have 41 kids coming every day, all summer.
Thank you for sharing that. And again, I apologize for putting you on the spot, but it sounded so exciting on Friday. I thought the rest of the group should learn about it. Thank you. Celebration. All right. And so, again, we take a look at Roosevelt. One of the pieces that Ms. Berger had shared is she's like, you know, I just want the board to know some of the fun facts that happened here behind the scenes. So, she goes, at kindergarten, you know, you see the 66% piece. She goes, but what you don't know is that like where the cutoff is that we had, if you look at being at a level, reading level three, she's like, we had 82% of the kids there, they were almost to that next step. And then, the same goes for grade one. She talked about, you know, we were at 43% that needed to, for getting to that level 18. 16 is the level right before that. And she's like, 77% of the kids were there. So, she just went through that data and she's like, I just want them to know, like, the fun fact is, we were really close to meeting our goals. We didn't quite make it, but still really excited about that progress. And from the conversations I've had with all of, all of the principals that are the AGR schools, everybody was talking about how close the kids were and sounded like the teachers were such cheerleaders for them, but just didn't, they said, we just had another month, we could make it. So, we'll, we'll take a look down the road on that. But then again, we'll take a look. Here is the percentage of growth for literacy and then for math. And then, we'll just jump into Jefferson.
Yeah. So, to echo kind of what some of my colleagues have already stated, we did have a number of students that were right on that cusp of proficiency. As I was looking through the data in terms of literacy results, I had 38 students that were, that were just missing the mark of that proficiency. And I'm confident that as we move forward and even with math, we had 30 students that were right on that cusp of proficiency as well. And with Jefferson's strategic plan moving forward to close those opportunity gaps, I'm very confident as we move forward next year into a full academic school year with students in person and, and having those barriers eliminated that a lot of our students had encountered and our families had encountered while being virtual and learning through hybrid, that we are going to be able to close a lot of those opportunity gaps that you may see here that we have illustrated for you today. But same to echo what Roosevelt has stated, is we had many students that were right on that cusp of proficiency. And if we just had a little more time with that face-to-face instruction, we're confident that we're going to see some really great gains. So, you can see here is our percentage of growth with Jefferson for literacy and then with math.
And then, Webster Stanley and then we'll just say jiddle, jiddle, jiddle. And then, their girls, literacy and math. Any questions?
No.
One of the things that school boards and teachers and administrators are always proud of is growth. And you certainly demonstrated that. And you've also spoken to the incredible work of the staff over these last 15 months under less-than-ideal conditions. I think there's no question that these programs have been successful in the past. And I base that statement on having been in your buildings and the other two schools that aren't here, but all of you have these nice plaques, they're usually in the shape of the state of Wisconsin, and they might've been called at one time Schools of Promise or some other similar language. But they all speak to the success of what has been done through the AGR program in our school. So, I want to thank all of you and your staffs for continuing that tradition. And I'm also, I'm also buoyed by the engagement that you're proposing, that you're going to continue with your staff to continue the growth of these students. So, again, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other? No? Any other questions, thoughts? Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next is our consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has furnished all the background materials for each item and has discussed it at a previous meeting. These are acted upon in one vote without discussion. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it must be pulled from, out of the consent agenda and be voted on separately. Are there any items that, well, first, are there any items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda? All right, I would then entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
So, move?
Second.
All right. Moved by Lyman, seconded by Wright. Is, so, I have to read this one, this one resolution. So, the board will consider the approval of one personnel resolution, A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salaries. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hrazad?
Aye.
Carrance?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Lyman?
Aye.
Harlan? Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next is individually considered resolutions, of which we have none to consider this evening. So, I'll move on to any requests for future agenda items. Any board members with requests for future agenda items? All right, seeing none, I will move on to announcements. There are none listed in the agenda, but is there any announcements from any board members that they'd wish to make at this point?
No.
Oh, there would just be one. I believe all of you have received a communication from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards for a workshop to be held in Green Bay on July 24th. I'd encourage you to take a look at that. I think that might be valuable to us as a board to attend or several of us to attend and bring back the information. It would build on what Mr. Nitski had shared with us in terms of being a highly productive board. So, if you have an opportunity to fit that into your schedule or at least to consider it, I encourage that. Thank you.
And that's the one on a Saturday, right?
It's on a Saturday, right.
Makes it doable.
I'm sorry. Maybe it'll rain that day. No, I just.
All right. And then, I just have one announcement just into preparing you all for our next, our next meeting on the 23rd, is that I've, we've put on the agenda a topic of, called onboarding of our next superintendent. And you've all provided some supporting materials to assist with that conversation. We're going to engage in that conversation in a public format. So, so, just wanted to let you guys, let all of you know that that's been provided to you and to be prepared for that.
All right.
Sure.
Just in what we do in our district with equity work, I just want to say that we are in June and it is for LGBTQ community pride month. So, I just want to, you know, in doing what we do with equity and everything, we just wanted to, you know, to bring that up. So, thank you.
Thank you for that recognition. All right, I would look for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So, move. Second.
Moved by Carrance, seconded by Wright. All right. Moving to executive session to consider the disciplinary data of specific persons, State Statute 19.5, parent one, parent F. A, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules of State Statute 120.13, parent one, parent C, parent E. Number two, deliberating, deliberating to or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E. A, Oshkosh Education Association, OEA, negotiation strategies. B, Oshkosh Profession, I'm sorry, Paraprofessional Employee Association, OPEA, negotiation strategies. And C, Nonteaching Employee Association, NTEA, negotiation strategies. Discussion. I have discussion. So, I, just so you all know, I'm going to be taking part in number one, but I will not be present for number two. And I'll take this as a moment to declare that it would be a conflict of interest for me to take part in those negotiation strategies as my wife is an employee of the district. So, all right, looking for roll call, please.
Okay. Carrance?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Lyman?
Aye.
Harlan? Hrazad?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned into closed session. Take about five minutes and we'll meet in the IST room.